I'd like to welcome everyone to the Upsher County Commission meeting for January 11, 2018, with the meeting with the no asylum meditation and all other pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with the same sense of honor, mission, and value and ethical commitment to justice.
Thank you, gentlemen, for saying the pledge. I was somewhere which will remain nameless and after the moment of silent meditation, I hopped up and I turned to the flag and went like this, and everybody's still sitting there, and I was like, and I looked at the agenda, approval of amendments, and I was like, permission, oh, no, I'm not going to take it, but I was surprised. So, thank you.
The gentleman had a chance to look at the minutes from January 4th, 2018?
Yes.
Any additions or corrections?
None.
Enter motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? We have an appointment at 9:15, a public hearing to consider evidence related to the possible closure of an unused paper alley located between parcels of land that Mary Hernan owns in Buchanan District. She may call in.
She is, yes, at 9:15.
Okay. At 9:30, we're going to review the proposals received for legal representation and potential FBL litigation. Proposals must have been received by 4:30 on Monday, January 8th, 2018, to be considered. At 9:45, we have an appointment with Mike Rezak, Risk Control Consultant for West Virginia County's group self-insurance risk pool. He's going to provide us with an update regarding the risk pool. Move on to items for discussion, action or approval. Number one, review and signature correspondence to Timmy O'Leary, Community Development Representative, in closing community development block grant, small cities block grant request for payment for the help enjoyed PSD Phase III water system improvements in the amount of $4,632. This is for requests for funds number five. Have a motion? Approved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, authorization for Carrie L. Wallace, County Administrator, to use Samuel R. Malti's official signature stamp to sign required documentation on behalf of the Upsher County Commission.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, authorization for Tabitha R. Perry, Assistant County Administrator, to use Samuel R. Malti's official signature stamp to sign required documentation on behalf of the Upsher County Commission.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, correspondence from Donna K. for requesting reappointment to the Upsher County Civil Service Board. Upon approval, this K.'s term will expire on December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, correspondence from Douglas K. White, part-time Circuit Court Bailiff, announcing his resignation effective January 24th, 2018.
I would like to add one thing when I talk to Mr. White's wife, if you want, thanks to the commissioners for giving me the opportunity to work for us, and he is going to be fully retired and enjoying it. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, correspondence from David H., County Sheriff, requesting approval for the advertisement for one part-time Circuit Court Bail position. Obviously, that's to replace Doug's position.
Yes, on page 11, there's a slight typo, adopt the page instead of job description, that'll actually say job opportunity for the advertisement in the paper.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proposal signed? Motion carries. Three, information, certain items may require discussion, action, or approval by the Commission. One, correspondence from Tabitha R. Perry, Assistant County Administrator, to Thomas Mose, regarding his property located in Warren Tax District, Tax Map 6C, parcel number four. During the regularly scheduled Commission meeting conducted on January 4th, 2018, the Commission moved to grant Mr. Mose an extension to bring the property to full compliance with the ordinance by the end of March, 2018. Two, correspondence from Tabitha R. Perry, Assistant Administrator, to Todd Spencer, Walter Gold, regarding his property located in Washington Tax District, Tax Map 7J, parcel number 11. During the regularly scheduled Commission meeting conducted on January 4th, 2018, the Commission moved to grant Mr. Gold an extension to bring the property to full compliance with the ordinance by the end of March, 2018. Three, correspondence from Tabitha R. Perry, Administrator, to Frank Kelly, regarding his property located in Washington Tax District, Tax Map 7J, parcel number 11.1. During the regularly scheduled Commission meeting conducted on January 4th, 2018, the Commission moved to grant Mr. Kelly an extension to bring the property to full compliance with the ordinance by the end of March, 2018. Four, Upsher County Road Name Index as of January 2018, prepared by Terry Jepin, Upsher County, addressing the MAG coordinator. Five, Upsher County 911 Communication Reports, November 2017. Six, Upsher County Mileage Reports, November 2017. Seven, newsletters and/or event notifications. Eight, agendas and/or recent meetings. Nine, meeting minutes. Ten, meetings. Eleven, appointments needed or upcoming. Twelve, Board of Equalization and Review Meeting Schedule, which have to start February 1st, 2018, and end on February 16th, 2018. There are any table items at this time. The County Commission will sit as the Board of Review and Equalization, beginning at 1:00 p.m. on the 1st of February, 2018, and shall continue to work. Shall continue to work is complete, but will return no later than close of business on the 16th of February, 2018. The next regular meeting of the Upsher County Commission is January 18th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in Upsher County, 4,000. Take care of some paperwork until 9:15 for our first appointment. Okay, it's 9:15. We have a public hearing to consider evidence related to the possible closure of an unused paper alley located between parcels of land that Mary Hernan owns in Buchanan District.
Ms. Hernan, is that she's calling now?
Okay.
Is there anyone here in opposition to the closure? Ms. Hernan?
Yes.
Hi, this is Carrie Wallace, you're on speaker here in the Commission meeting. Thank you for calling in.
Yes, ma'am. I have a little signal, but we'll try this.
Okay, if we do, we'll try to call you back.
Okay.
So I've already provided the Commission with a copy of the affidavit that you had given me, showing that you advertised for this hearing in the Record Delta on December 11th, 2017. And is there anyone here in opposition to the closure, the closing of the alley? So it doesn't look like you have anyone opposing the closure. Ms. Hernan, do you have liens on either one of those properties?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so then you aren't required to notify anyone by certified mail of the hearing.
Okay.
So Ms. Hernan owns outright the two parcels of land surrounding the alley, and speaking with Terry Bree, he advised that normal protocol is to split the alley down the middle and give it to either owner on both sides. However, since she owns both sides, then if you choose to close the alley, it would go to Ms. Hernan. One thing that we need to require is a survey of the property if you so choose to close the alley, which would have to be filed with the order in the county clerk's office.
I'd like to, Mary, thanks for calling in, just take that right.
Okay.
I'd like to make a note, I've looked at the property, there's nobody else, it's not accessing anybody else's property on either end or on either side, so I haven't seen problems at all.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I just have one question.
Yep.
Would you like to require the survey in advance of signing the order, or do you want to sign the order and require the survey in order for work to take and file in the county clerk's office? I think you could do it either way, it doesn't matter.
Why not? Why don't we just sign the order, and Mary can get us a survey?
And then she would be responsible for that, I mean, if that comes to office.
And she's responsible on both sides, the only person she served at informs herself in here. And follows the procedure, so are you making a motion, please?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'll tell you what, I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
We'll prepare the order for next week's agenda, we're free to sign.
Thank you, Mary, for going through the process and taking care of things on your part.
You're welcome, thank you for your time.
And Ms. Hernan, I'll go ahead and draft that order, and I'll have it on the agenda next week for approval, and once it's signed, I'll give you a call to stop by and pick that up, and then you'll just need to have your survey done, and then once you have the survey returned, you'll file the order with the survey in the county clerk's office.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, enjoy your vacation.
And stay here, bye-bye.
We'll continue to pay bills and work on paperwork until 9:30 for our next scheduled appointment. Okay, it's 9:30, and we have an appointment to review proposals received for legal representation and potential FBL litigation proposals must have been received by 4:30 on Monday, January 8th, 2018, to be considered. Then we head to one from Fitz Simmons Law Firm, and the other one from Chayton Law Firm.
The RFP stated that it was not necessary for the interest of furniture in the meeting, as you would be reviewing their proposals and setting up interviews to get discretion on your view.
Okay. Carrie, there's somebody out in the hallway here, they're going down toward Fitz, old court house.
This is Mike Rezak, I have a question for him, he's your guy, 45.
Okay.
I'm sorry, are you ready now?
Uh, 9:45. So Carrie, we can just take our time, look these over, and then come back and review them, we need to make a decision today on which firm.
No, you don't, would you like to set up interviews at all, or would you like a week just to review them and then set up an interview?
Let's have a week to review them, and then, if that's okay with you guys, and then you can decide what interview we like to interview next week. I don't have anything at all.
Table decision until next week?
I've said on the agenda whether you need to call anybody to meet here together, because I think we'll probably look this over, I mean.
I've got a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Maybe you can call this week to find out. I'd like to know what to go charge, like know if there's any filing fees, or did they take care of filing fees?
I think they both charged 25%. There is a really lengthy order that Fitz Simmons has already filed on behalf of the clients that they are representing, but I think it would be good to read. It's very lengthy, so if you could have a week to look over that, and then discuss your review next week and potentially set up interviews, I think that might be the best. I think that it would be good to meet with the person, get your questions answered, because in conversation, I think that could be additional questions that you may go, rather than just sending them questions that are on the line right now.
Those are the first attorneys we talked to, some of them were going to charge us with filing fees and stuff like that.
Chayton states 25% and expenses, Fitz Simmons states 25%, but they don't state whether or not expenses are. Both of them, you are only charged if there's a settlement.
Yeah, exactly.
So there wouldn't be any expense out of General County if there wasn't a settlement.
Okay. So we'll review, okay, all right. Think of what you have in mind.
So would you like the table?
Yeah, I'll need a motion to table this week.
Second.
A motion and a second to table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mike, we have to wait until 9:45 technically, since it's.
Oh, that's all, yeah, okay. Where are you in the agenda?
We're done with everything on the agenda except for the 9:45 appointment with.
Oh, I'll get that.
Risk pool.
I'll get on the agenda for next week, then. I had a complaint about the county not reimbursing one of my employees. Get in there to them next week.
If you'd like to speak to them, they can.
What's that?
They can speak with you, they just wouldn't be able to make any kind of a decision if you're asking for a decision until next week, or we need to run the agenda for next week.
I'll get it now, it's an argument of the county clerk.
Yeah, and I'm actually going to the auditor's office right now. Is the discrepancy between what our policy says, that we've always followed for tougher reimbursement for something that doesn't want to follow it?
That isn't true.
For the.
That just absolutely is not true.
Well, but they're not.
This county agreed to the grant documents, which includes that they will follow state procedures. We provided you certification from the people who administer these state funds, and said that state procedures are to pay state per diem rates. That's how those grant funds have to be administered. Now, they haven't been administered correctly in the past for a number of reasons. For example, the training funds begin with, we had to argue with your assistant to get even put a line at them, it had to be buried in with county funds. And that is a problem right there. First of all, you can't use these grant funds to supplant county funds, it had to be shown as a supplement, when then you bury them all together, you're creating a horrendous problem. The rules for administering these grant funds is according to the state procedures. The county commission approved that in silence, and you're taking upon yourself to say, no, we're going to follow county rules. And first of all, you don't have that authority.
I would agree with that, I spoke with the Commission, and we've always followed.
I know, you came up and spoke with them last time, after your assistant had already been told we were getting more information, you didn't even come up here and share that with the commission. When the information came back, it was that you're wrong, and you are wrong. Now, I have an employee who paid expenses over two months ago in his own credit account, and he can't get the money back to the county. It's not even the county's money, it's federal money, administered through the state. And the agency that administers it tells you that this is to be done through state per diem, he submits, and you say, no, you made some comment to my assistant this morning that, oh, you can't have it both ways, I don't even know what the hell that means, can't have it both ways. Nobody wants it both ways.
Well, I think that, I mean, from what I understand, I mean, this is the way I would, that's not from what I understand, that's what I personally think, that if we, it is county policy if it has something to do with county, if it's not associated with a grant. If we are doing something under a grant, then we need to follow the grant rules, I mean, that's the whole purpose of receiving the funds, we should follow their guidelines and standards, so I agree with this.
It's right in the administrative manual that it's to be done by state per diems.
Exactly, because otherwise you're in violation of the grant.
The first provision in the standards, conditions, and assurances, which the county commission approved and agreed to comply with, is a grant application contract should be governed in all respects by the laws of the state of West Virginia. State procedures and practices will apply to all funds dispersed by DJCS regardless of the original funding source. Then, senior program specialist for the West Virginia Division of Justice and Community Services says, please be aware that Advocate Matthew Cutwright is following the state requirements for the meal per diems for travel and training in order to fulfill the federal grant requirements. Is it two, is it in both ways, it's following the rules that apply to the particular matter? I approved it, I approved the expenditure, you don't really have the authority to administer the funds that are appropriated to me, and it's being done according to the law. Meanwhile, I have a young man who has several hundred dollars that he's had to pay in order to avoid paying interest on it for two and a half months now, because you want to argue, you wasted so much of the time, I've got very important things I need to be doing right now, to get ready for report tomorrow, wasted so much time with this petty bureaucratic crap, which has no basis, it's not county funds, it's to be administered according to state procedures, we showed you what those were, and yet you still.
I have not received that back, other than the phone call that I got today.
Right.
Since I brought it to.
Which you didn't like, and said, well, you can't have it both ways, it's very unprofessional.
I apologize for that, but.
You should, you should apologize to Stephanie.
I will apologize to Stephanie, and I do apologize, but you have to realize that we have everyone, that we have a policy, and people tend not to want to follow that policy. It's the county policy, and yes, it could be different, but the Commission has always, and it's my understanding, and we do have a call into the auditor, it's always been my understanding that the county policy can be a little more, a little less restrictive, so all worry I have to bear is receipts that.
No, you're mixing apples and oranges, that's not even relevant to what I'm talking about.
How much money are we talking about a day?
It's $18 a day per diem in Charleston.
And how many days was he down there?
Well, it was 24, it was by their schedule, I guess, day of the week, it's 18 and $24. He was down there like five days getting trained to be back to Mappin', trained at their expense, with their pre-approval.
But I don't think it's really a matter of how much money or how long he was there, I think the matter is, since it was under the grant, that's.
Well, on the flip side, we have asked people who have traveled for grant money, and if the per diem is $18 a day, and they spent $25 on a meal, the Commission would reimburse them $25.
Well, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be, because you should not be paying, you should be paying according to the grant. The grant is administered per diem, and we haven't always done it correctly, we've been trying to get ourselves back in compliance with the letter of the day, and we've been getting the help from the people in Charleston, they've been concerned about too, I think they've been criticized from Washington. So like, we submitted one before, when your person argued about how $6 was spent for lunch, and wanted him to go get a receipt from some China buffet in Charleston to prove he ate there and what he ate. How much time are you going to waste on something as silly as that? $6 for a China buffet, how could that be fraudulent? We can't be arguing, just go over to Ty Walker, have him ask for a receipt for your lunch, send you the bill, I mean, it's just, you're taking the bureaucratic side of it, and you're twisting things around, and you're not helping, you're supposed to be facilitating the mission, and you're still getting in the way of. What the hell am I going to sit up here arguing about getting $18 per diem, when it's all right and right, and you're following state procedures? The administrative manual says that, confirmation of that from an official, and now we're arguing about receipts for his lunch, when you're obligated to pay it under per diem, not $25, if he has receipts, it's $25 to pay per diem. Now, that's not, I'm not talking about county travel, I'm talking about travel that is approved, approved by this grant, to be paid under this grant's procedures, that's all I'm talking about, and that's not having it both ways, that's just following the rules that apply to that grant.
I think, you know, on grant, you've got to follow the rules of the grant, that's why swimming pools are still up there, it's an indefinite grant, nothing we can do about it.
If I understand per diem, per diem is what somebody gets so much a day to eat, and that's it.
They can eat nothing, or they can eat three times that much, that's what they get.
That $18 is there, because that's per diem, that's what they get, no question, if they spend $25, they only get $18.
Right.
If they ate six, they only get $18, but I think that most of your major companies, you know what I mean, gives people a per diem, you know what I mean, you can use it if you want to, if you don't, but they pay per diem, if you're a problem, you're under, just lucky, I guess.
Of course, I spent years traveling under the federal travel guidelines, and they have lots of rules, they have to govern against wasting or fraud too, but they had some common sense rules built in, like, if a taxi ride was under $25 or something, I didn't have to have a receipt or whatever, I could just claim that, if it was, if certain expenses were above an amount, the reason I'm bringing that up is this $6 thing, I mean, but why waste everybody's time trying to justify that you spent $6 having lunch in a China buffet? I mean, you end up, it's like companies, you know, they end up wasting a lot of money sending out a letter, because sending the letter is worth more than the 10 cent meat fund, it's it, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, I think too, Dave, I mean, we've figured out a couple of things here, okay? So I think in the past, this has been county policy, so that's probably what our employer was trying to follow, which I agree with you 100% of the grant, I mean, you are our county attorney, and you probably know these.
Well, I'm the administrator for this project, and Carrie's the fiscal officer.
Right, so.
And so that's why I'm not understanding, why isn't the county clerk saying, no, we're not going to do it the way you approved?
Yeah, so.
Of course, if I do something that is not right, I'm willing to listen and change it to get it right, that's not what was done here, it was just a veto, you know, we're not paying that expense.
I think that, like I said, I think we figured out a few things today, so.
You know, everybody makes mistakes, but with that being said, I've seen things go wrong before, this Commission, almost Mr. Cutwright, that definitely was questioned, you know what I mean, and absolutely looked at, and when there is no way in the world, you know what I mean, this is right. So we put a policy in effect for county employees, if they go somewhere, and we're going to pay for your meal, ring us a bill, and we'll pay for it. Now, and that's been the county policy for years. Per diem, you know what I mean, I understand it, work the gas wells, get per diem, whatever, for your motel, lodging, that's what you get, if you open that, you pay for it, if you're under that, you pop it. I just think that's something that we will look at, and we will address, and we'll see if Mr. Cut. I just think that's something that we will look at and we will address and we'll see if Mr. Cutright gets a turn here.
I would just suggest that it doesn't include this thing in particular.
But I'm just, you know what I mean, I'm just sorry that, you know what I mean, we haven't wasted, it's not wasted time because we learned from all your mistakes, but we will address that issue and hope it doesn't happen anymore.
Well. Something I'm doing, proving or whatever, is not right. I'd be glad to talk to anybody about that. If it's not right, I'd be glad to change, but I mean, this is all black and white. It's written down. It's true that county policies don't have to be the same as state. I mean, I'm not arguing with that. That's correct.
I think we agree.
That goes according to what's within the province and the county. Here they had an agreement for federal money that's being administered to the state according to, they had an agreement to follow the procedures.
And I think that that's where this falls different than just county policy is we've entered into agreement to accept funds under this federal brand and we need to abide by their rules and regulations according, you know, in order to stay in compliance with the grant. So that's just, I think, where in the past, maybe we've thought, because this is the first time I've, it's, you know, this has come up since I've been on commission. But I do see where, if it was county policy before, that they were probably just trying to follow that rule. But you are correct. It should be, you should be following the grant.
If somebody in the state auditor's office says that this has to be done according to county policy, I'd like for you to let them talk to that person.
I will.
Because I can't imagine that this is the only federal, the only grant money being processed according to. I mean, it came to our attention because the person who, one of the administrators told Matt, well, what are you putting in a bill for your lunch anyway? It's per diem. It's to be done by per diem. I mean, it's a statewide procedure, so I can't imagine nobody in the auditor doesn't understand.
I did, as soon as I spoke with Stephanie, I did put in another call because we have been in the past, when we've been audited, we have been written up for not following what our policy is. And, you know, when you're the person sitting in that seat and you were told that you're not following the policy, you try extra hard to follow it.
Is that on grant funds or?
This is following county.
Um, specifically, I can't, I can't tell you that included grant funds or not grant funds. I know that, you know, if we've paid mileage at all, right, if we, you know, if we don't have receipts, which is our policy to require a copy of the receipt even for a six dollar lunch because that's what our policy says to do. So, you know, we're going to follow whatever. I will share with you whatever the auditor gives to me. I just, the message that I just got said that the auditor says that we would like to see the grant documentation and I would like to point out that we did bring, I didn't veto the bill. It was lost my attention. I bothered up asking the commission and we asked for more information and until this morning, I've been hearing.
Your person that works for you had been told, but since the holidays, wherever, we're getting some feedback from Charleston on that. Did she tell you that? Because you need to, we talked to the county administration, talked to the county commission without any word about the fact that it was being investigated. Did she tell you that?
I have to be honest, I don't. I think that she said that there maybe was some words out there, but we haven't received anything or so on it.
I don't mean to be personally hostile to you.
Well.
If it seems that way, I apologize.
But I think too, that maybe the employee should just come to you and then explain it to you. And then if you feel it's an issue, you should probably talk to Dave. She probably shouldn't be trying to handle it behind the scenes. I think that's the proper procedure.
They changed some way. It's a working model this did and so, but yes, Dave, I will let you know for sure and please submit that back to David and we'll take care of it.
Well, we have the, if the auditor wants to see the documents, we have those all here. There was one mistake in the way this was submitted. It was originally submitted on a copy that didn't have the signature of Mr. Cutright. And it was recent that it was submitted. I would think that, I mean, just what I have here, put it in your document, it should cover the other. Here on the standard conditions and assurance, it's going to follow state procedures. This is a verification. State procedure is you state per diem on these funds. What else? It uses a penetrator, you know? This is what is given to our people by the Division of Justice and Community Services. Travel training, skills training for staff, which may include travel at the state per diem rates and state regulations. And training costs registration fees. I mean, in several places where that's a procedure for these funds. And it did trouble me somewhat. Stephanie earlier had to insist that a line item be made for that travel. That has to be done. Is that not been done in the past? You've got to show that that's separate funds, that it's supplemental funds, not supplanting funds. And when you take, if you put it in the, if you put the money in the prosecutor's budget and just pay it out of that, there's no way you can show that either that you're spending all the funds that was provided by the, or that you aren't spending it or that it's got to be separate.
Well, I thought that there was already a line in there for that. It just didn't, I don't know that it was budgeted that way. I mean, in the general budget, I think that there's already a line item for that. It just didn't have any money in it.
Well, Stephanie had to argue with your staff to get the line item number for that book of travel training. And then it did get created with the five hundred dollars in there. That number had to be put on the document, the forms we were submitting because we had to do a lot of accounting on, had to do monthly accounting on the grant as well. And that line item number had to be there. It wasn't there. The money, I guess, had been put in the prosecutor's budget, which, I mean, that would be a subset of the prosecutor's budget, but would need to be shown as separate money from what the county's providing for the prosecutors.
Because it's right. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Karen. Mike, sorry to keep you waiting there.
No, no, not at all. I appreciate you guys coming through the agenda. This really won't take too long. I just have to just put a couple of quick folders together for the commission.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, as you know, Steve, we try not to bother you guys too often, but about once a year or so we come in front of the commission's office. This is a reminder that we're still out here and if you have any questions, you can get in touch with us directly. Normally I'm spending my time testing tablet or area and I just put together, I mean, I guess a bunch of these items. Together one for the two of you, a little bit more on that. I put your boss ones in there. There's nothing I can give over on that front. But we've just been trying to get out this year, this past July marked our ten year anniversary of the pool. So we're pretty excited about now. We're up to forty-seven of the fifty-five counties now, over a hundred different authorities. So we've been growing at a good rate. Still haven't lost a single county. So we started a pool here. So things have been going pretty well for us. Just wanted to remind you that, you know, again, this is your program. So we appreciate you guys being part of it. It's member owned. It's member run. So we try to be as responsive as we can to the needs of the county. And I work primarily on the risk control front and most of you guys are used to seeing me at this point. We've done a lot of the sexual harassment and discrimination thing for you guys. Just as a reminder, there's other things we can do as well. We can come out and do physical inspections of the property to kind of evaluate it from a property or liability or even a worker's comp kind of exposure. We can also take a look at certain policies and procedures typically from a safety perspective. Things that you're looking at updating the driving policy or maybe a drug testing policy, things of that nature. We can take a look at that. We've got in-house legal counsel and our staff will be happy to do that. We also serve as a nice hub just having most of the state in the pool. It's kind of a good source for sharing ideas as well. And finally, I know you guys have taken advantage of this, some of the HR topics we do from a training perspective. We do a lot of safety training as well. We've got a couple OSHA authorized trainers, myself included. And the only other fire I put in there besides just the risk control and in general that last one, the law enforcement side. That's kind of an area we've seen some changes in this past year. We recently hired another former law enforcement trainer. We've got another one on staff that's just been a bigger area attraction for us. Typically, they're the ones that run the roads more often. They're the ones usually get hurt a little bit more often, more physically demanding jobs. So we've got a really great program on that front. We've got now, like I said, two retired officers that administer that. Just carries a little bit more weight coming from a former law enforcement officer doing some of the training. All the training, of course, there's no charge to it. You guys just get it as being members. We come to you. As far as the things on the law enforcement side, all that stuff's been pre-approved with Chuck Sandler in Charleston. So your deputies would be getting continuing education credits if any of our trainers came out to do any of that training. We're up to fourteen credit hours that we can offer. Of course, your deputies need sixteen every two years. So that's been kind of a big thing for a lot of the counties this past year is that some insurance, that little tighter and things. And it's just a great program there. So, as I said before, I just didn't want to take too much time. Just wanted to remind you, we're, you know, we're never going to twist your arm or make you do anything, but you can't really take advantage of it if you don't know it's there. So I think it's important just to remind the commissioners as well every once in a while that we're out there and we're happy to help out any way we can. Any questions that you have for me or anything related to Steve? Just want to hand you a phone in? No, Carrie.
We appreciate you. You guys are always easy to work with and.
Well, that's the goal. So appreciate that.
We appreciate what y'all offer. We appreciate you coming here once a year. You're only putting on programs and stuff like that because that is good for our employees. I mean, we appreciate that. We know that as time goes away, if you can help us, you'll be here.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And appreciate all the work that all of you do as well, you know, being on top of the sexual harassment training that we've been doing for a couple of years. As you can imagine, this past year, we were all over the place doing that. Kind of was on the forefront of everybody's minds, but you guys have been doing that for years. So just wanted to commend you all for that as well. So again, thanks for your time. If you don't have anything to help, I'll get out of your hair if you want to take too much of your time, but I appreciate it.
I was here today to re-measure the health department.
Is somebody taking you down personally? Is there a reason?
We can.
I think we should do that.
Just what, the confusion then?
Well, it's pretty, it's marked pretty.
Well, it happened before.
He's seen a picture of it. That was a third party that had done that before. I think that must be.
Yeah, we used the Marys to come out and they, I think, what we think now is it's took a look at the wrong buildings and that's what I'm out here doing today.
Well, pretty well we're done except going over a few things, aren't we?
Yeah.
If you want to, I'll take you out and show you where it's at and I'll just walk back. I'll sit close from here and then I'll come back up and.
That's already, I really appreciate it.
Just consider it done.